All right, we'll call a meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge. All right, good evening, everyone. Tom, take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Here.
Councilmember Posma.
Present.
Baker. Right here. Baskin.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Pashusta.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number one's a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I have number two is a motion approving our minutes from our January 2nd, 2024 meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion also carries. Number three, under recognition and awards, we have nothing. Uh, four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under public hearing, we have I have number five is resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Bigelow and Lennon Construction for approval or denial of the abatement. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Uh, Bigelow Lennon has a, another application for us for tax abatement in Nature's Ridge subdivision. Estimated value of $309,000. This is at 1805 12th Avenue Northeast. It's in conformance with our adopted policy. And this is a public hearing.
All right, seeing no one from the public, uh, council, any questions or comments? Otherwise, looking for a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number six is a resolution receiving bids for the Dresner Park Siphon Project. Mitch?
Uh, so, we have a project for a sanitary sewer, um, reconstruction in Dresner Park under the Cedar River. Uh, and we bidded, we bid this project, uh, almost two years ago in April of 2022, and the bids came in, uh, quite high. Uh, so we, uh, rejected the bids and rebid it, uh, last week. Uh, we received five bidders, and the low bidder was Minger Construction with a bid of $982,458. Um, and our budgeted amount was, uh, 1.1 million, so we're under our estimates, or, and, um, we reached out to the contractor because their bid was quite a bit lower than the, the other contractors, and, uh, they had no qualms about doing the work at that price, so we feel confident moving forward with them.
Excellent, yeah. Thanks for doubling up on that. It was substantially different, so. Uh, council, any questions for Mitch on this?
Mitch, did you get an idea of why they were so much cheaper?
Um, Stephen talked to him, I didn't. Um, so no, I don't know specifically. Um, from what I do know about Minger Construction, they like doing kind of this dirty work, which is in the water and tough projects, so they maybe just feel more comfortable with it than other contractors.
Thank you.
I did ask Stephen about that too, when the bids came in, and his indication was that they specialize in this sort of construction, so that's, they know what they're getting into, and he says this is exactly the type of things they like to do, so.
Okay.
Or the other ones were, yeah, we were kinda eyeballing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't wanna get in the water.
Well, thanks, Mitch. Uh, looking for resolution for I have number six.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
See.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number seven is a resolution, uh, under petitions and requests approving our 2024 assessment rates. Mitch?
Also, at the last work session, we kinda walked through the assessment rate process that we do every year. Um, and, uh, the motion was made to increase the assessment rates by seven percent for 2024. Um, this will keep us in that ballpark of about thirty percent, um, of our construction costs being assessed to adjacent property owners, um, for the 2024 year. Uh, if you have any further questions, we can walk through more if you'd like, um, but that's about all.
I think it's, I think it's always easier for the public to handle when the street in front of my house is gonna be redone this year, and I'll be at a thirty percent increase, so I can say, I'm, I, I feel your pain, but we all have to share that pain, so it's perfectly timed, so it's the way it goes. It's the price doing business. Thank you, Mitch. Uh, council, any questions? Looking for resolution for I have number seven.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero.
Thank you. I have number eight's a motion, uh, approving our option number two for the Oakland Avenue and First Avenue Southwest Street Reconstruction Project. Mitch?
Yep, so again, at the last, um, work session, we walked through the Oakland Avenue and First Avenue project that's planned for 2025 through 2027. Kinda walked through the public input that we've, uh, received, um, starting back in September, all the way through, uh, December. Um, some online surveys, two public meetings, um, and all the written comments are attached in the, uh, the memo. Kind of a breakdown of the three options, and I'll, I'll just walk through those again to remind you. Um, so option one was, uh, keep parking on both sides of both roads. Uh, the roads would stay the same width as they are today. We would have five-foot sidewalks on each side of the road, just like today. Um, option two was reduce the driving lanes by one foot each, and narrow the parking lanes by six inch, six inches each, which would, uh, result in the narrowing of the road by three feet. And then we would add three feet to the sidewalk on the north side of Oakland Avenue and the south side of First Avenue Southwest, making that an eight-foot sidewalk. And then on the opposite side of the road would be a standard five-foot sidewalk. And then the third option would be narrowing the roads, um, by three feet, uh, with one-foot driving lane reduction for each lane, and then six inches on the, each parking lane. And then we would widen, uh, both sidewalk, sidewalks by one foot, making them six feet wide. Um, the results from our online surveys, um, and, um, public meetings kinda favored option one with about fifty-five percent of the, um, um, popular vote, and then option two is at about thirty-eight point seven percent. So, our recommendation was option two, and that's what was voted on at the work session. Um, so that's what we're voting on tonight.
All right. Council, uh, need to look for a motion if you have any questions for Mitch on this.
Hey Mitch, question for you on, I know some folks have reached out with concerns around kind of the narrowing of the lanes. Obviously, in a vacuum, the, well, nobody wants to drive on narrower lanes makes that. Can you kinda walk through, like, what is the material impact of going, you know, down essentially a foot in lane width? And how does the Oakland Avenue, First Avenue, new lanes, how do those compare to, like, normal regular roads that we, we grow on? Cause I think that's an important part of the conversation.
Yeah, so kind of the, um, a standard road or lane width for a driving lane is eleven, uh, between ten and twelve feet. So eleven's right in the middle of that. Um, in the past couple of years, we've done a couple of projects that we've reduced the lane width. Um, one example would be Tenth Street Northeast by, um, from Oakland to Second Avenue, right by Austin Builder Supply. Um, that road is forty feet wide. It used to be forty-four feet wide. So that would be one foot narrower than what's being proposed in option two on Oakland and First Avenue. Um, so there's an example. Uh, we also narrowed, um, uh, First Avenue in front of the post office and between First Street and Main Street a couple of years ago as well, so another example. Um, but generally, the, the lane widths, eleven foot's a pretty standard lane width for, um, state aid, uh, street reconstruction.
So as we think about that, so we've narrowed the lanes, so what you're saying is like, we've narrowed the lanes on some of these other things. I don't think any of us have probably heard any objections to that. I honestly didn't even notice until now you mentioned that. I'll go drive it tonight and see if I see a difference. So right now, we're at twelve feet, we're going to eleven feet. Eleven feet is incredibly standard for most of the roads that we're on. And so it's not like we're gonna make it narrow. How do we think about concerns with like, all right, it snows, right, and we've gotta, you know, plow and stuff like that? Any concerns in terms of like cars getting through, traffic flowing, emergency vehicles, things like that?
Yeah, anytime you get a big snowfall event, that could, you know, impact the lanes on a temporary basis. Um, it might require we do a little extra cleanup after an event like we had this weekend where we had some blowing and drifting. Um, you know, right now, with how cold the air temperatures are, salting doesn't really impact the, the, uh, ice that's packed on the roads. We gotta wait for it to warm up, and next week, we should be able to scrape some of that stuff off. Um, so yeah, there could be a little more, uh, snow removal that needs to take place to help keep cars towards the curb, but, um, I don't see it too greatly impacted. Uh, we'd have the same boulevard width for, um, snow storage, um, in the boulevards. Um, so that wouldn't change from today to the proposed project.
Okay. Thank you.
Mitch, we talked to three hundred people, give or take, and fifty-five percent of them said, we like the existing layout of those two roads. And we, and, but we're gonna ignore that, and we're gonna narrow it by three feet to add three feet of sidewalk. And I'm just struggling with, what's the compelling reason why? Why are we ignoring all of these people?
I, I wouldn't say we're ignoring them. Um, you know, the, the initial proposals that we had for design options included, um, no parking on one side of the road, and we, you know, that was wildly unpopular. We, we got rid of that, that option. Um, you know, that, I would say the reason for having the connection, or the, the wider sidewalk is the ability for future connections to our existing trail system, um, which is mainly located along the river corridors. Trying to expand that network to the west side of town, uh, make connections to the downtown area as well. Trying to serve all modes of transportation, whether you're driving, biking, or walking.
For reference, three hundred people is 1.15% of the total population, so that would.
And you know as well as I do, it is a statistically significant sample size.
I don't know that three hundred random, non-randomly selected people is statistically significant.
Mitch, do you think any of those three hundred people were probably traffic engineers?
So we're all smarter than the citizens. Let's just, let's just say it now. Come on.
That's not what I'm saying at all. I'm saying.
Sure you are.
We've been elected to make decisions for the community, taking into account the expertise of our staff. We asked for public input, but we didn't ask them in the context where we know that they have studied these issues.
Where we would value their opinion.
I think we, so I, I don't know if anybody else did. I actually, there was two meetings that were held at the library. I went to the first one. It was very full, and there was a lot of folks with some real concerns about some of the proposals. Um, and I was impressed with how the engineering teams took that information, heard loud and clear that we need to maintain parking on both sides of the street, and found a way to make that happen. The other thing that I heard loud and clear from a lot of folks is the desire to calm down and slow down traffic on that road. And it is scientifically proven over and over again that the wider the road, the faster people go. So by, you know, bringing this road three feet tighter, which is still solidly in the middle of standards, will allow us to have, you know, a wider walking area for, you know, the main drag through town that goes right past our high school, while keeping roads standard and parking on both sides, I think is the ultimate win-win. And while number one might have been the most popular one, it was fifty-five percent, which means forty-five percent of the folks wanted to do something different. So I think this one actually kind of, you know, if you, if you only had two options, it's statistically not that different to me. So I really appreciate the work that was done. I'm glad that we were able to help the businesses by keeping parking on both sides, and I think this design will set us up for the future really well.
And it's duly noted that we, it was a five-two vote, uh, last meeting when we moved this forward to option number two, so I'm anticipating it being the same this time, but council does vote as one. I guess we do, we always, we love to have the public input, but in the end, I think, uh, some things that we know the public might not, I don't know, but I, I trust the engineers' option, uh, choice on this too, and so I'm looking for a motion for approving, uh, option number two.
I would just like to add that I was approached by a business owner, kinda what Jeff was saying, is that when you have fifty-five percent who say, leave it alone, and us, as council voted in by those folks, say, your opinion really doesn't matter. Here's what we want. That, that's not right to me.
Yeah, I, here's the way I look at it. I, I think there's two valid ways to view it, right? Because I think there is the, hey, we do a survey, we wanna get input. I think that's an entirely valid way to, to look at it. We can quabble whether it's statistically significant or not, but I mean, there's a majority of people, at least that were surveyed there, who preferred option one. As I start to think through it, and I talk about, you know, kinda pluses and minuses with it, in my view, I think the pluses outweigh the minuses with it, because the, the primary concern that's been expressed is a concern about narrowing the roadway and what impact that has on traffic. From what the engineering team has talked through, I can get over that, because what I'm hearing is we're going from an incredibly wide road to a normal road, which has the ancillary benefits of slowing down traffic. It's still incredibly drivable. It's, you know, we've done it in other areas, and nobody's noticed or had any negative impacts. So then, if that mitigates the concern over that, then we start to think about what are the benefits to the community. Hey, we're connecting, you know, bike trails and things like that throughout the community. We're making it safer and more accessible for pedestrians, especially around kind of a main thoroughfare. We're addressing the majority of the concerns around parking and things like that, and so, you know, I, I think there's two very valid ways to look at it. As I weigh the pros and cons, I can take care of the cons, because I think we're addressing those, but I think it's fair to have a different way to weigh it, and certainly respect that as well.
All right, go ahead, Joyce.
Yeah. Uh, and I assume that at all of these meetings, the, the, the public was presented with the same options and the reasoning why. So I'm, it, it's very difficult for me at this point to, like Jeff, um, have such a good turnout on our surveys and the meetings, and fifty-five percent saying they want it left the same. But we have our expertise of you guys saying, we'd like to see this in the future, so it's a tough decision, I think, for all of us. Um, me personally, at this point, I think I'm gonna have to listen to the taxpayers on this one, so.
It just got closer. Looking for a motion. I have number eight.
Yeah. So moved.
Move the option number two?
Option number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Thomas?
Motion by Councilmember Helly, seconded by Councilmember Posma to approve option two, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nope.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Nay.
Pashusta.
Nay.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes four-three, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, moving on to I have number nine is a motion approving a $25,000 from the 2023 carryover funds for the Whitewater Design Project. Mitch?
Again, another item we talked about at the last work session. Um, we were approached by the Hormel Foundation about, um, kinda refining our requests for funds for the preliminary design on the, uh, Whitewater project, proposed Whitewater project. Um, and so, we looked at how we could come up with some funds here, since we don't have anything budgeted for 2024. Um, but we did have a project that will not be taking place, that was budgeted for 2023. Uh, so I, I proposed, um, taking a portion of that money and applying it towards, uh, this Whitewater project, uh, the amount of $25,000. Um, and then whatever, the estimated cost of the, uh, preliminary design is about $75,000. Uh, whatever we are not able to fund through the city funds or, uh, private fundraising, we would be requesting of the Hormel Foundation.
Okay. Questions for Mitch on this, council?
I am, uh, not at all a fan of this Whitewater project. Uh, and, um, you know, I reread the study by the people that want more money out of us. Um, I think the economic benefits are fuzzy, soft at best. Um, you know, I was part of the city council when we started the process of collecting $25 million for local, for, uh, in local option sales tax for flood, for flood prevention and relief. We spent fifty million bucks as a community on flood work. And I think this puts part of that effort at risk. I don't like that. Um, you know, the, the flow rate data in that study is fascinating. If you read it, it'll tell you that the best time to be surfing in this thing is in April. I'm gonna tell you, I'm not, you're not, you're gonna find me on a surfboard in April in Austin, Minnesota, or probably ever. Um, I'm worried about water quality and the impact that will have on people wanting to come down and play in our water park. Um, you know, we, we live in Minnesota. We, you're talking about when you combine flow rate and just basic number of days available to be outside, you're talking about about twenty days to forty days where this is gonna be a viable thing for recreation. I think that's a, that, that leaves three hundred and twenty days where it's unavailable. Um, you know, and I, folks, I, I, we're talking about spending between seven and fifteen million bucks. We got people that are hungry in our community. We got people that, we need better housing in our community. We have underfunded our public safety groups. And if, I, I just, I struggle that this is just such a nice-to-have and not a need-to-have. And I think we gotta stop this thing before we keep spending money, throwing good money after bad.
I think all your points are valid. Councilmember Baker, I, I would just look at it a little differently, and I've said it before, I, I don't know that I'm, I, it, it wouldn't bother me one bit if you or anybody was surfing on that waterway once it's done. To me, the, the design, the flow, the, the dam needs some updating, needs, gonna need some repair work, if not a whole new dam somewhere soon. But just the, the design of a more park-like setting, a waterway with, uh, strategically placed, um, rocks and boulders, and just what that would do for the development side of the, that side of the, of the river, or, I think it would be amazing. When you talk about housing, I think you're gonna entice a developer to develop that area over there with that waterway, um, spruced up and more of a park-like setting and something people wanna be around. So I just look at it a little differently, not so much as it is gonna be a whitewater rafting project, but it's just a beautification of the waterway project to entice more development.
Yeah, and I, to build on that, and then we may set a record tonight of number of times that myself and Councilman Baker have probably voted on the opposite side of issues, so we should probably put that in the minutes here. Um, but yeah, I, the way I look at it is, first of all, we're not talking about a fifteen million dollar project right now. We're talking about, okay, the feasibility studies showed there's something there, but there's a lot more work that we need to do. I think it's the upside potential of the transformational impact this could have to our community, both short and long term, is worth taking the next stage to figure out, is there really more there? Or are there some catastrophic challenges that we need to run into? I think the flooding is absolutely the right question to be asked. I think the, what's the viability of it, absolutely the right questions to ask. I think we're gonna address those as we start to design and we start to have some of these conversations. But the reality is that if we can address some of those things, there are communities that would kill to have a river running through their downtown. Myself included, and I think most of us forget that we even have a river running through our downtown right now, and as we think about the redevelopment opportunities over the next forty, fifty, sixty years, I think it's worth us to take at least the next step. We may have a different conversation when we get the design back and go, eh, I don't like it. Or the support's not there, or, you know, other organizations that are a key part of it don't wanna be able to, I think that's a worthy conversation to have, but I think there's enough there that it's worth us taking the next step, because there is some big, big upside for Austin and what we can become.
Anybody else care to weigh in on option, or I have number, uh, nine? If not, looking for a motion.
Uh, move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Tom?
Uh, motion by Councilmember Posma, seconded by Councilmember Baskin to approve twenty-five grand from, um, carryover funds for the project, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nope.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Nay.
Pashusta.
Can I just say something before I vote?
I don't know.
Um, I, I'm too not, not convinced on this project yet, but, uh, like Jason, I am willing to take it to the next step, just to see kinda where we're at, so, um, with that, I vote yea.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five-two, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, I have number ten is, is, uh, accepting these donations, uh, into the city of Austin. Two thousand dollar gift from the VFW for the Park and Rec Ski Program. Seven thousand dollars from the Austin Eagles Charitable Gambling to the Whitewater Project. Thirty dollars from the Cedars of Austin for Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, twenty dollars from Richard Lee's for the way up, uh, Police Weight Room, and a hundred and sixty Bruins hockey tickets at eleven dollar value per ticket from the Austin Bruins to go to the First Responder Appreciation Night. With those looking for a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
You bet.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number eleven is a resolution approving the application for offsite gambling for the Fraternal Organ of the Eagles, number seven oh three, at the Moore County Fairgrounds, 712th Street Southwest, on March first, 2024. Tom?
Uh, just we received an application that requires a resolution for a special event they're having there to hold some, um, gambling activities.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number twelve is a resolution approving active transportation program grant application. Mitch?
Yep, so on the Oakland Avenue and First Avenue project, again, uh, we are continuing to look for, uh, additional grant funding to go towards that project. Uh, currently, uh, between the two streets, we have about five million dollars in grant funding that we've secured so far. Uh, but this grant is for, um, improvements to walking and biking on the project, so we're going to be applying for three hundred thousand dollars in funding. Uh, that would go towards, um, pet ramp improvements, uh, sidewalks, things like that, things that we're already, whether, no matter what option was decided on, was gonna be taking place on this project.
Okay, council, any questions for Mitch? If not, looking for a resolution.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Pashusta.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, I have number thirteen is, uh, approving council appointments on boards and commissions with the one change of, uh, Councilmember Helly is getting off of the HRE board, and Councilmember Baker will replace her. Uh, with those looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, I have number fourteen is a ser, a couple of motions granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. Fourteen A is, address is 1306 11th Street Northwest, the Hastings property.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number fourteen B, address is 304 Second Avenue Southwest, the Hoye property. Need a motion.
Second. Or so moved. Sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Put Jeff down for whatever.
That motion carries. Citizens addressing the council. Val, you're our only citizen. Would you like to address the council on anything that wasn't on the agenda?
No, thank you.
All right. Um, honorary council, we have none until March. Uh, reports and recommendations. Craig?
I have nothing.
Also, we'll start with Joyce.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Just wanna thank the snowpaw drivers. Obviously, they've put in a substantial amount of work over the last several days, um, so thank you for the time above and beyond, and it is appreciated.
Yes, some tough conditions. Thank you. Jeffrey?
Uh, it's my honor and privilege to read the anniversaries for this month of city employees. Uh, starting off at the top with Lynn Thompson, twenty-seven years at Park and Rec, Tim Brant, twenty-six years, Street Department, Tricia Brandon, twenty-four years, Park and Rec, Ernesto Cantu, twenty-four years, Police Department, Brant Stroff, twenty-one years for the Police Department, Dustin Wallenberg, twenty-one years in the Police Department, Jamie Grabow, eighteen years, Wastewater Treatment Plant, Melissa Wilson, sixteen years in finance, Sarah Steinhoff, fourteen years at the library, Jim McCoy, ten years the Fire Department, Josh Stadheim, ten years, Engineering, Mike Laux, nine years, Sewer Maintenance, Nate Haffes, eight years with the Police Department, Mike Bolster, six years, Sewer Maintenance, Wanda Hatfield, two years, Clerk Department, and Damian Schroder, one year with the Police Department. Congratulations to all those on their years of service, two hundred and thirty-seven years combined, uh, with this group here.
Excellent. Thanks, Jeff. Jeff?
Uh, nothing for me. Thank you.
Mike?
Uh, just a reminder, uh, that there's a lot of great Paint the Town Pink events going on over the next couple of weeks. You can jump in Frozen Lake, you can shoot some skeet, you can go watch some hockey. Pick the one that's best for you and help support, support our institute in town and all the great work they do.
Thanks, Mike. Laura?
Nothing, Your Honor.
And according, according to Jason, we're gonna.
Oh!
Park that one down.
All right.
Let's move, let's move on. Let's not happen again. Don't embarrass Laura. Uh, Jason, your understanding is we're not gonna jump in Frozen Lake. We're gonna wade into it potentially with the weather conditions not being favorable to ice.
That is a possibility. We're gonna go inspect the situation, I think, Tuesday of next week. We do have, um, extreme cold temperatures for the next three or four days, but then it's gonna jump back up to the low to mid thirties, and so we're not sure what the sun and the melt might do during the day and what the. what the sun and the melt might do during the day and what the, for, the freeze might do at night, so it's kinda up in the air. We're looking at it as a, as a alternate, um, option is to get a backhoe out there and just kinda scrape it so you can walk in. Uh, the main issue is the ice level to get equipment on the ice to, to cut out.
Cut the ice.
Yeah, the ice out, so.
All right, we'll see what, we'll see what the weather brings. Thank you. Uh, I have nothing. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn to our meeting on February, Monday, February fifth.
So moved.
At five thirty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, and then, uh, we'll take a five-minute break to enter into the work session.